Stand up for the first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you so much. Can we have the roll call, please, Sandy?
Councilmember Allen Boss.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Ingalls.
French.
Mayor Shippers.
Here, thank you. Um, I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda as amended to add a resolution setting a public hearing for the Lakeland Apartments Brownfield Plan under adoption of ordinances and resolutions.
Support.
Councilmember Hopkins.
Yes.
Ingalls. French. Allen Boss.
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Yes, motion carries. Next, we have public comments, and this is an opportunity for the public to have a chance to make a statement regarding any subject matter. Public comment is not an opportunity to necessarily ask questions or converse with city staff, council members, or other meeting attendees. Contact information, if you have questions, is on the website. You can find us all there. And time is limited to three minutes. Unused time may not be yielded or given to someone else. I've also been asked by a number of folks in the community as of late if, when you state your name, would you also state whether you live in the city of Cadillac or in a township, just to give us an idea of what our demographic is here. So if you would be so kind as to give us, state your name and state where you live, city of Cadillac, or Clam Lake, or whatever, okay? So with that, it's time for public comments. Good evening. I'm Lynda Durant, and yes, I live in the city of Cadillac. I live over in Kenwood Park area, which is the reason I wanted to say something. I can't stay for the whole meeting, but I know that one of your things is a public hearing, and it's about the docks. I'm sure you will do what is best for town, for our town. Years ago, it used to be a free-for-all. There was fistfights. There was dock shoved off into the lake. There was dock set on fire. People were fighting over the spots. And it's been a number of years ago. And I don't know if I remember this correctly, but I know that street ends, people were always fighting over that part, too. It was either the State of Michigan or the Department of Natural Resources. I don't know who had the jurisdiction, but they said no more docks at street ends. And I know a lot of that was from Houghton Lake and Higgins Lake. They had a big problem there, too, same as we did. Um, I'm a little confused, though. I'm quoting this from your minutes, from the last meeting, and Brad Marine noted that there was already several docks on public property on North Boulevard. And he stated that the council should be transparent regarding the legal questions about this. I don't know what this, I don't know what he's talking about with that, because from Cheryl's Landing to Seneca Street, there's three streets that go to the lake. I looked, there is no docks at the end of those three streets. No one's put one in. The frontage along there, the people have riparian rights, so they're not putting docks in on public property. From Seneca Street to Kenwood Park, there's approximately 40 docks. Those are all in the North Boulevard Marina Association, which, as you know, is a different thing altogether. It has different rules. That was a lawsuit, and it, the city has control of that, but there are no docks on public right-of-way along North Boulevard. So, and I know on Sunnyside, they have a lot of the same issues in that a lot of the people have riparian rights along there. And my understanding was you could not put a dock at the end of the, of the street ends. So I don't know what the problem is. I know where Brad Marine's dock is, and that's, that is a little different. That's different than a street end coming straight down and everybody fighting over putting a dock there, and they've had a community dock there. So whether that's a special use permit, or however you word it, that's a difference, that's a different thing altogether. Anyhow, good luck with that.
Thank you so much.
My name is Jim Stang. I live at 908 Cardinal Drive, and I'm a resident very southwest corner. I'd like to speak about two things, or three things, really. The speed limit on Crosby. Twenty-five miles an hour from Division, or 55, what do you want to call it, south is 25 miles an hour. There's 45 miles the other way. If you go south on Crosby, you have all the lots, all the driveways have turnarounds on, except one. Now, I happen to live around the top of a hill, and I can see where, just before, uh, uh, what's that, Pauls?
Pauls.
Yeah, yeah. And so I can see right there coming over the hill at 25. But first of all, when I moved in five years ago, bought the property, I saw a policeman, and there, I said, "What do you do about the speed limit through here?" He says, "We don't give anybody tickets." I said, "No," he says, "unless you're going 45, 50 miles an hour." So they don't afford any help, but by luck, I'd find a new cop that didn't know that yet, you know? So that's one, uh, one I'd like to have you look into. The other thing is Cardinal Drive is terrible. Right? At Cardinal and Crosby, the great, big, huge area where the pavement's all torn up. Now, Ken Payne looked at that the other day. He says, "Yeah, we need to do something." Well, then you turn around, go around the corner, and right at the corner, there's a great, big, huge area. Again, go further south, there's another one. And now, we've been told that we're going to have the luxury of having it repaved in 2029. We're not trying to be greedy, but really, I even called Kent up this year and said, "Will you please come and pick up all the asphalt that I just blew out of our road and put it in your yard, your road?" Because chunks and chunks of asphalt were in my yard. And the other one, I'd like to mention, just support your West Side tax program. Just a reminder, that's really not a tax increase. It's 2% of the additional revenue that is brought in would be, would be assigned to that West Side. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing no one else, I'm going to close public comment. Thank you, everybody, and move to our PFOS update. Jeff?
Comments?
Hello, Mayor. For the update tonight, I have to say we have 58 wells, 58 wells in the city have been tested and completed for PFOS. Seven people, an additional seven people did their own Cyclope Pure and/or Eagle tests, and they have given us those results. So that's, you know, up to 65 people. We have 44 people that we have contacted in the M Part area, and we had two follow-up people that called us back that we referred to Eagle. Eagle wants to do all the testing the same in the M Part areas. Of the remaining people, or the remaining lots, we have 13 vacant lots. We had four residents that denied testing. They just do not want it. Since our last meeting here, we've had 14 new tests conducted, and we're waiting for those results. So those will go on the 65 to bring us up to 79 tests in the area. And then that leaves 36 residents that could be tested in areas that we're testing that have just decided not to. We have put out a main letter. We have put out door hangers. We were at the PFOS fair, and then we turned around and did door hangers again. We're actively trying to get them. We'll probably stop actively trying to have them get their water tested at the end of July, because we've put in a lot of time to get people tested. Of the results, we did get back since our last meeting, which was 12 of them. There, none of them had PFOS levels at anything above either state or federal criteria. As you see, there's a new chart up here. This chart shows the state levels on the left and the federal levels on the right for PFOS and all the PFOS compounds. Currently, the ones on the left, the state ones, are the ones that are enforced. The ones on the right are the ones that the feds have suggested. They have repealed the ones with stars on them. They're re-studying those, but the ones that don't have stars on the right is going to go into effect in 2031 would be the active date, but if the state, the state will probably adopt those earlier, those levels. So again, all the test results we're getting back are below state levels, which is the levels we can actually do something about or that the state's worried about. And the federal ones are, they're below those also, but those really aren't in effect yet. We have 3,590 accounts of those. Again, about 240 are in the city that are on wells. So we got about 6.7% of the city population is not on city water, so 93.3% are on city water. They're getting clean PFOS-free water. We tested, we've done three tests now in the last, I think, six months. We did one in the fall, one in the spring, and now we just did another one. All of those, well, the two tests that we've gotten back have come back non-detect, and the third test, we're waiting for the results on. So we do test this quite, as the sign says, you know, Cadillac municipal water, regulate it, test it, and PFOS has never been detected. I know there's some rumors out there, especially when you get beyond our community, that we have PFOS in the water. We, there is PFOS in private wells, but anything municipal, it's PFOS-free, and we need to get that message out, that the municipal water is PFOS-free. We, to help our residents, if you remember back in the day when we found PFOS the first go-around, we had bottled water. Ice Mountain gave us two semi-trucks full of water. We're down to about five pallets left. We have about two months' worth of water left that we've been giving away to people. We've sent out letters to those people that are receiving them. At first, you had to come to the water plant to get them. After we found out that really wasn't working, we went and delivered to every person that had a test done, a case of water and a letter that says, "If you want this delivered, contact us." And we've been delivering water to those homes for, since, I want to say since March, probably. We've only had 14 people take us up on that, and we've been delivering 50 cases of water a week. Of those 14 people, five of the people we know have filters from the health department installed already, but we just continued. We asked them, "Do you want it?" And we just continued to deliver it. We didn't need all the water at our facilities, obviously. And so we are getting down to the last two months. We have told the people, sent out letters that just indicates, hey, you have two months left. If you haven't gotten this filter, you should get this filter, and this supply is going to stop when we run out. So if they want, and they still don't want to use the filter, we did buy those five-gallon Carboys. We would gladly give people five-gallon Carboys. They could come to the water plant and get water and take it home.
Jugs, right.
Jugs, Carboys jugs, yeah. And, but we will stop the actual delivering of it to people's homes, because they've had multiple months that the health department would provide it for them if they're qualified. And the health department, just to plug for them, they do supply the water filter. They do supply the installation of the water filter, and I do believe they're giving filter, you know, replacement cartridges to the people as they need them. So, I mean, it is a very good program that you can actually go out and get clean water at your house if you have levels of PFOS and you're not on the municipal system. So.
Wrap that?
Um, sure.
Okay. I do have one last item under the PFOS update.
Can I just say something about that first?
Yeah, sure.
I just want to say that thank you so much, and I'm so proud of how our community, our city, and the community at large has responded to the discovery of this issue, and just stepped right up from Ice Mountain to Jeff and your folks doing the testing and delivering water, offering city water to people in jugs that don't have it. That's how, that's what solutions-driven means, and that's where we are. We are finding solutions to a problem that was revealed to us, and I'm just really proud of how everybody has responded. So thank all of you for doing that.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, the last item is in regard to an engagement letter that I would love for the city council to consider approving this evening. This is a partnership that Foster Swift, our legal counsel, has with another law firm regarding a nationwide PFOS settlement. A city attorney did brief counsel on this several months ago, but in short, we are looking to be a part of a round two or a phase two of the class action suit, should there be one. Mike, would you like to add some additional information to what I'm throwing out here?
Sure. So the city has been identified as a phase-two claimant. The settlements have been agreed to by both DuPont, 3M, and I think that Tyco may be in that mix as well. In any event, it's too early to determine whether the city may get settlement proceeds from their phase-two claim, but we've been working with counsel from New Orleans, who's on the multi-district litigation board. Some of our other municipal clients in those cases who had PFOS in their drinking water systems were phase-one claimants, and they're starting to get settlement proceeds distributed. So it's worthwhile to file that phase-two claim, which is a groundwater contamination.
So will we do that now?
Yes.
So we need a motion to approve?
I'd make a motion to approve the engagement letter.
I'll support.
Councilmember Ingalls. French. Allen Boss.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Yes, motion carries. Excellent. We're getting to the people who are actually responsible for the PFOS in the water. Thank you so much. Okay. Next, we have the consent agenda. We, on the consent agenda, we have, what do we have? We've got minutes from, where is it? Yeah, we've got minutes from the regular meeting, minutes from the closed session.
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Councilmember French. Allen Boss.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Ingalls. Mayor Shippers.
Yes, motion carries. Okay.
Okay.
Turn the page. That's a good song. Um, public hearings.
First, we have a few.
Yes, we do.
And before we dive into them, first thing I need to remind city council is, given the couple of absences that we have this evening, should counsel wish to move forward in the affirmative, any one of the ordinance adjustments based on the public hearings, it will take an affirmative vote from all three of you that are present tonight. And as always, counsel can always not take action either, and it can come back at another point. The first public hearing this evening is a hearing to consider the adoption of an ordinance to amend Section 26-104 and Section 26-110 of our Code of Ordinances. This is in regard, essentially, to the road end docking. It would be appropriate for me to do a quick pause and ask for Teresa Waldo to quickly stand up, if you would. Teresa Waldo is our newest Director of Community Development. Thank you very much for jumping in and joining us and being a part of our team here. Jerry Adams, who is our former, former development director, is still here with us and serving in a consultant role to a degree, helping us with the transition, and will be presenting the update tonight. But I believe, starting in August, it'll be Teresa in that hot seat, so.
Great. Thank you so much. Welcome aboard.
Jerry, if you want to provide any opening remarks or just slight updates from where we were at the last meeting.
Essentially, we're, very importantly, we're only dealing with public road ends. There are 11, as we discussed at the last meeting, there are 11 of those, and historically, traditionally, there's been very little use of those road ends for the placement of what we call seasonal docks. And as we talked a couple of weeks ago, essentially, this ordinance would effectively eliminate those docks. And in many cases, quite frankly, the road ends are not really conducive to placement of docks from the standpoint of access from the street itself. So if you have any questions, we did, Councilman Ruth Ann French, Councilwoman French, she asked about the use of those road ends, you know, could somebody walk on one, for example, and look at the lake? This does not negate that possibility, okay? If somebody wants to go and, you know, watch the sunset, this ordinance has nothing, nothing to do with eliminating that, so.
So then the uses would still include, like, swimming at the road ends or fishing at the road ends? Just not a dock?
So swimming at road ends is currently not a permitted use in the code. If that's something that council wants us to look at, we can certainly do that on another evening.
The big issue is liability, of course, and maintenance. If we want to encourage the use of those road ends, then we have two issues. We need to maintain them on a regular basis, and we also need to make them accessible by folks that have physical challenges, and that's extremely difficult, very costly. And as I mentioned last time, we have nearby two very excellent recreational facilities. Well, really, we have more than that from the standpoint of parks and so forth, but there are a number of well-maintained facilities that provide all of the pleasures and amenities that these road ends might provide.
The only other point of clarification is, we had a member of the public earlier this evening toss out the road ends, you know, along North Boulevard from Seneca West. That's part of the North Boulevard Marina Association. Those road ends are essentially encapsulated in the legal settlement agreement and the code in its own separate section that are exempt from what we're talking about this evening in terms of prohibiting road ends in other locations in the community. And again, the state of Michigan did prohibit them, we, several years ago, with some ability for there to be wiggle room, I guess to call it that, if you have at the local level a program in place. And as Jerry Adams had explained, for several reasons, there just hasn't been that demand, other than in this one location.
Maybe one final remark, too. In addition to the statement that was made tonight, we did receive, I believe it's in your packet, we did receive correspondence from a nearby neighbor, and we also received a phone call. I happened to take the phone call from a nearby neighbor. I know it was a nearby neighbor, because I know the party, and they were in support of what the, of eliminating the seasonal docks at road ends.
All right, so I'll open up the public hearing, and during a public hearing, the comment time is five minutes.
Hello. My name is Carla Moore, and I live in Cadillac, in the city. So I just had a couple of questions, or maybe suggestions, about the road end docks. I've lived in other lake communities in different areas of the state, and I was wondering if they could be changed to, like, deeded lake access for the couple of blocks right around there, if that would help. And then also, if you couldn't do that, maybe make them into, like, little micro parks or something. They would then be public, but at least they would still be available with a dock, and it would be like a morale booster for the community. I think it's a good opportunity to do that kind of thing, either one of those ideas, instead of just missing it altogether. So that's all. Thank you.
Seeing no one, I will close public comments. Anything from you two?
No, I'd have to agree with Jerry. Liability.
However, Marines are not here. Their dock, I mean, does this mean their dock is going to be gone, like, as soon as this is passed?
Yeah, so how does that work?
No, it's a great, it's a great question. The city attorney will clarify. I believe we have five days to publish action of an ordinance after city council takes that action, and then from that publishing date, there's then a 20-day cooling off or holding period before that ordinance, whether it's a new ordinance or an amendment to an ordinance, actually takes effect. So pending on my dates, and Mike, I don't know if that was right, what I said, but if that is, you know, it's going to take a day or two before it's published, an official publication, not just like a news break or something. And then another 20 days from there. So you're looking at, you know, basically, the end of August, mid to late August at the earliest, so.
Yeah, it's seven, seven days and 20 days.
So seven days and 20 days.
Seven days from today. So that doesn't get us to the end of August.
Well, it depends on when. Well, it's not 27 days from today. It's.
27 days from when we publish.
Yeah, we have seven days to publish. If it's counsel's desire for us to wait until the end, we can, we can certainly do that.
For this season.
We're going to say till the end of August?
Till the end of August?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that we go till the, can we do that?
Sure. Yeah, it's just working the publishing dates with city clerk and the newspaper.
Okay, that would be, I think that's our, that would be our desire.
Okay.
You could, you could actually set the effective date of when you want it to become effective.
That would be even easier.
Can we set the effective date as Labor Day?
Sure.
That way, we get out of this season, and then we're done.
Yep.
Okay.
So that would be then a change to the draft under Section 5, changing the effective date from 20 days after its adoption and publication to Labor Day, and we can get that date. I don't have it in front of me.
Okay. All right, and that, and if the dock that is there now has to have their name on it, correct? And, okay, so we want to make sure that that's got a name on and contact information and everything? Okay. Fellas?
I'd make, go ahead, big guy.
I'll take a shot at it. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinances to amend Section 26-104 and 26-110 of the Code of Ordinances.
I'll second.
Councilmember Allen Boss.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Ingalls. French. Mayor Shippers.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, number two.
Number two. We are here this evening to facilitate a public hearing regarding the Formy, Formry, former Cooley School building that is in the process of being redeveloped into a residential, multifamily spot. We have several special guests with us. I think I'm going to bring you guys up
I think I'm gonna bring you guys up first, okay?
Okay.
Okay. We do, all right, well, we do have a PowerPoint as well.
Yeah, we've got two, actually.
Okay, perfect. Perfect.
It's up in the corner.
That's Mike, Mike's in the corner.
Mike's in the corner, he's not wearing a hat, is he?
Yeah, no.
I don't think, does he need to sign that, that's only for public comment?
Yeah, this is the presentation, that's okay.
All right, good evening, I'm Dean D. Cragger with the DK Design Group. Thank you for your time this evening. With me tonight is James Lewis with Pinnacle Construction. And we are partnered up on this project to hopefully move it forward. As you know, this has been on the books for a long time, has been moving steadily but slowly, there's been a lot of grant application and work that is happening, and that's why we are coming before you with regard to the brownfield. We are almost across the finish line as to how this can work. We are planning to, in August, be bidding this out and pricing it so that the hope is to start construction soon after the first of the year. We're, as I said, getting close to the finish line finally. What you can see on your screen is a picture of the existing former Cooley School. It is in fairly rough shape, especially inside. This picture is different than it looks right now because we have boarded up the lower windows, they had a lot of people breaking in and things being vandalized. As soon as we boarded up the lower of the windows, a number of kids from the neighborhood started throwing rocks at the upper windows, so now we'll have to do that, so. But as you can see, that it's kind of a available nuisance that we are going to clean up. Our plan is to develop this into 23 units, 18 in the original Cooley School and five in the annex. And there will be a mix of efficiencies, one bedrooms and two bedrooms. The existing gymnasium, this is one of the existing classrooms, so it just has an interior shot. The existing gymnasium will contain three two-story units. This is a rendering of what the interior should look like. Obviously, we'll be keeping the window openings, masonry openings the same. We've got to, because of historic tax credits, keep the original window styles. We will also be expressing a lot of interior materials that were there as far as brick, wherever we can. This is going to be very hard to see. If someone wants to see it, I can get them a, a larger description, but as I said, we're talking 18 units in the original Cooley School and five in the annex. And we just, we'll go through and tuck point the exterior, it'll get new roof, new windows, all-new mechanical, electrical, obviously, the interior will be reconfigured some, but the primary classroom walls will stay. And our intent is to preserve it and enhance it for the neighborhood.
Dean?
Yes.
Would it be fair to say that but for your redevelopment plans, there is a pretty good chance that the building would frankly just be demolished?
Yes, that is, I have to, as part of this, thank Cadillac County Public Schools. CAPS has been very patient with this whole process. We've been moving it as quickly as we can, but it takes a long time. For example, our first, first set of notes back from the state Historic Preservation Office took six months to even get those notes to us before we could respond and move it on forward. So we're running into some of those hurdles. CAPS has been very patient, but yes, if this does not get developed this round, their intent is to demolish the buildings. So with me also, as I said, is James Lewis with Pinnacle Construction. James, I don't know if you have, he's the numbers guy, I just put lines on paper, so he can talk to all the important stuff.
But Dean makes it look nice. Yeah, so my name is James Lewis, I work for Pinnacle Construction Group, I do real estate development for them. I specialize in putting together complex capital stacks using a bunch of different state funding to redevelop projects like this one, where there's not really a private market solution for it. You know, the rents in the area don't justify the cost that the, the building redevelopment would, would take. You know, one of the things that's funny about projects like this is it costs way more to redevelop a building than to tear it down and build a new one. But, you know, from talking to the, the people in the community and from, yeah, neighbors and residents, there seems to be a strong desire to keep this building. You guys have done a lot of work in community engagement and visioning for it, well before I came onto the project, explaining the rationale for why the, the city wants to and the, the general public wants to keep the building. There's a lot of memories there, it seems like. You know, one of our, you know, I'm from Grand Rapids, but one of our project superintendents, like, he actually went to, went to school there, he talks about some fun, some fond memories there. So, you know, we have a, you know, we want to, you know, preserve this thing for, for you, and it's taken a long time to figure out what the proper structure for that was going to be from a financial and legal standpoint. Originally, it was going to be a partnership between Pinnacle Construction and DKD Development, and we were going to be the owners of it. Through this process, we've discovered that it makes a lot more sense to move it into a nonprofit ownership structure. We just started layering on too many grants to make it, make sense from a, a tax standpoint. So the idea is that a dedicated nonprofit's going to own the building and manage the building moving forward, and we've applied for state grants through MISTDA, through the MEDC, through the state land bank, and the combination of all those plus historic tax credits and a, and a small permanent mortgage through probably Mercantile Bank is, is what's going to get us there in terms of a, a capital structure. And, yeah, that, that all takes time to, to put together, so appreciate everybody's patience with the project. You know, as far as the brownfield itself goes, you know, the state agencies who are, who are putting together the majority of the capital into the project, they like to see local participation, and the most significant way you can have local participation, financial participation in the project is, is the, the tax, the tax exemptions with, with the TIF and the, and the Oprah. So, yeah, happy to answer, any questions?
If I could add one other thing, too, I neglected to mention this property extends the full length of that block. Our intent is to develop the amount of property that we need in order to meet the zoning density requirements, and our intent is then to donate the south side of this property to the city for a park, or however they decide to develop it, but there are a number of opportunities there for park, dog park, playground, et cetera.
One, Dean, one quick question, parking's not going to be a problem here with this, we have enough room for parking.
Yes. We have gone, we've kind of gone back and forth on this, because of state historic preservation, we started with 23 units, we ended up then having to step back to 20 units. We went over their heads to the feds, and they approved it 23 units again, so we are in the process with Terry and her group going ahead, and, or Teresa, excuse me. They are reviewing it now as far as parking, but we believe we have enough room for onsite parking. We were going to add a parking lot to the north in front of the annex building, but because of historic tax credits, they would not let us do that, it has to be behind the annex building.
Thank you.
Dean and James did a really good job summarizing the project. There was even a scenario at one point while Mac is getting up, getting ready, where the city may have been taking ownership to make one of the, the grants work, but there was another more creative way for that to happen, short of that, so. Mac, why don't you jump in on the nitty-gritty here?
Okay, thanks, I'm Mac McClellan, consultant for the Brownfield Authority. After the exciting presentation, I get to do the boring stuff about brownfields, yes. So sit back, relax. It really is a, a pretty incredible opportunity that has come about through some changes in the amendments to the Brownfield Act. Traditionally, it was all activities, abatement, demolition, environmental work, hard costs like that. But there's a change that really tried to stimulate the opportunities for workforce housing, that is, folks between 80 and 120% of the area median income were to provide some additional support for that. And so what we can do is take the gap between the development costs, like James was talking about, and the actual revenues. There's that gap, we've been trying to fill that gap with a whole bunch of grants and dollars, but there still is a gap remaining, and that brownfield TIF can help support that as well. It really lowers the monthly rental rates, kind of an average of 290 or so per month. And importantly, it provides about 42% of the funding that's coming for the project from the state. So it's kind of like a $465,000 state grant over time. Each year, we capture those state revenues, so there's great state leverage for that. The brownfield plan is approved by the Brownfield Authority, that was done on June 30th, and by you all, and then after that, we go to the state and request specific authorization for state tax capture. Just a quick primer of brownfield tax financing, they're not dollars, you know, that are lost, these are dollars generated by the increased investment in the project and the resulting increased taxes that are generated by that project. They're captured to pay off those eligible activities over that time period that's there. Taxes are only captured on that brownfield eligible property, so no other properties are affected with that, and it's limited to the amount spent on eligible activities in the brownfield plan or the term spent. So it has an ending point for that, maximum of 30 years, but an ending point. Again, state and local taxes are captured, debt is exempt, so the TCAPS, debt mileage is exempt, and importantly, schools are held harmless by the state funding formula. The dollars, include state dollars, but they're made up through the foundation grants that are provided by, by the state to the schools per pupil foundation grants. And a few years ago, intermediate school districts, they, that always changed to reimburse intermediate school districts for any, any capture, so there really is no impact on the educational community. This kind of gives you an idea about how brownfield taxes work for non-homestead properties, these will all be apartments, so they will be non-homestead. About 25 of the tax, taxes are from the county, or from the city, excuse me, about 10% or so from the county, a few percent from the COA library and CWTA, about 10% from the ISD, and again, CAPS debt there, and again, 42% or so from the state that's there. You know, as we talked about, the property's been vacant for about 15 years, 23 units that are involved in there, and again, that's, these are, a, a minimum of those units are going to be for households, all of the rents will be within that 100 and, or 80 to 120, and even a little bit less than that by some other stipulation, so they'll be a, a very attractive rents. Some of the challenges that happen for meeting those households, sometimes you can't find folks in the household, so we're setting a minimum threshold of 12 units for those households. Again, the rents can't exceed 120% AMI for the area, and again, these rents will be quite a bit lower for that. Additional investment of about 4.7 million, and additional support from every source that was available, historic tax credits, over tax abatement. We were able to get a state, state blight elimination grant, we had a grant for the Western Concrete Property added on to that for Cooley School, so that'll pay for the roof replacement and the window replacement stabilization project, and also some proposed MISTDA funding that'll help support. So James has a great line about this is brain damage development, so this is kind of how that works, is going through all of these processes. So we did go through a detailed financial, as we do in these projects, a detailed financial analysis about how all that works to sort of measure that gap, and came up with about a million dollar gap that was necessary to make the project financially viable, and that's what will be captured under the brownfield plan. So again, kind of key factors is that the school is going to provide workforce housing. It wouldn't happen otherwise without these brownfield incentives, had to have that gap closed. Again, it's about a million dollars, state's going to provide about 42% of that capture. Schools, again, are held harmless, and capture is capped at that 1 million or 25 years, whichever's less, so. We've also included some capture for the local brownfield revolving fund that provides for future brownfield projects in the city as well during the period, and as well five years after, so there's support for other projects that we can help support workforce housing or other brownfield projects there. And again, the request for you is to adopt the resolution to approve the brownfield plan for Cooley, former Cooley School.
Just wanted to add for council and public's benefit that this is the same tool as, as our consultant Mac had mentioned earlier, it's a new tool under state brownfield law, and this is the same program that we have approved for use for the Lake Street, North Lake Street Flats project, as well as the Cadillac Lofts project. And so this is what a lot of developers are now moving, moving to and towards, and I would anticipate us seeing this for future projects as well that may come forward.
Thank you.
This is how, you know, the thousand burning hoops, but this is how you get workforce housing. I remember early on when I came onto city council 16 years ago, one of the things I heard most from employers and manufacturers was, they've got jobs, but people don't have places to live. And so we saw that as a mandate to, that we needed to get housing for workers, and that's what this does, and, and it's just moving right along, good job, good job, thank you, okay, now the hearing, I suppose I should have pontificated until after. Okay, so I'll open the public hearing, again, you have five minutes to have your say. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and turn to you two.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution approving brownfield plan, former Cooley School redevelopment.
Second.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls, French, Alabas?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries. Go getter.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Third and final public hearing this evening is with regard to the Development and Tax Increment Financing Plan for the Cadillac West Corridor Improvement Area. This is something that has been a very long time coming. In fact, Jerry Adams was working full-time for the city in the height of his career here when this whole concept actually started being talked about. And the Cadillac West Corridor Improvement Authority was formed, and I don't want to provide necessarily some ad nauseam explanation, but what I can say is that if you know what ADA is, the Corridor West Improvement Authority is the same model, it has its own board and its ability to create essentially a beautification plan, a wish list plan, a development plan, to talk about certain types of amenities and improvements to a certain geographic area by which capturing the increment of tax that improves over time in that area, those dollars could then be used specifically to help those types of projects out. Doesn't mean that everything and anything within that, that concept or plan will ever see the light of day. In fact, the plans are intentionally written as, as open as typically you could make them, so that you can try to get grant funding and other sources of funding to couple with your tax increment dollars. But what we have here tonight is a recommendation from your Cadillac West Improvement, Corridor Improvement Authority Board for city council to facilitate the public hearing and consider the approval of their recommendation of, of the development plan as they've, as they've shared it. Jerry, I'm sure you may like to add a few more things, or maybe not?
I think that you've indicated, the key element is that it does not reflect an increase in taxes.
Right.
Essentially, what we're doing is we're going to be capturing taxes on the appreciation of value, just like we normally would, but the taxes will go to the district instead of to, for example, the various taxing jurisdictions. And one of the difficult things about this particular project is there has not been a lot of new investment over the years, so it was very difficult to try to come up with some really quantifiable idea of what can we expect in the future. But as new investment occurs, hopefully, we'll capture the taxes on that new investment. And as Mark has indicated, we also can avail ourselves of various grant funds now, and so hopefully, we can mesh those and do some really nice things for the area.
I will open the public hearing. I will open the public hearing on the TIF, the Cadillac West Corridor Authority's Tax Seeing no one. Oh, okay. Thanks for piping up. Couldn't see you behind the post.
I'm a little slow today. So I'm Carla Moore again, and I live in Cadillac, and I just have questions. I've been doing a lot of homework lately, so forgive me if I seem like I don't know what's going on. That's not the intention, but I was taught that the way you learn is to ask questions. And so that's kind of just what I'm doing here. So I was curious about, are there any facts and figures of projected success versus the expenses, like a return on investment kind of thing? Are there, is there a list of other cities that have had success, like comparable size in the same situation with the tourism versus the downtown? And then, how does it, how does it benefit the citizens? That's what I'm trying to figure out in this whole thing. It seems like it's only benefiting a couple of businesses that are over there as opposed to the whole entire city. And I know that businesses in general benefit everyone because it keeps the city going, but it just seems out of place for some reason. And, you know, the dock was shot down a couple months ago, and it's like right there, plain as day, in their plans, so they had already gotten the funding for that, and it was tabled, so I'm kind of curious as to why that has to be brought up again. I mean, the fishing pier, excuse me, I'm sorry, the standalone fishing pier conversation. So that was all, just some different things that people are concerned about. Thank you.
My name is Jim Stang. My son happens to own the Cadillac West Mall, and he wasn't able to be here today. He's in Cleveland. But he did want me to bring up some items, and I want to clarify that, again, like you guys presented, this is a, you're not taking two percent of the taxes that are paid right now, and you're not taking that, you're taking new tax money. In other words, if my son decides to tear down that mall, build a hotel or whatever, then the additional revenue on top of what he's paid right now, the assessment, the additional amount will, will have captured two percent for developing that area. And I know myself, the other day, I was watching, I was at the ice cream parlor, watching people come across the street from the park. As soon as you get across the street to the west side of one-fifteen, there's no sidewalks, you know, and there's no lighting over there either. And some of those roads, you know, back to that motel, some of the motels are pretty rough. You want to go back to Lakeside Charlie's that way. But still, there's, so it's, it's not, again, you're not taking any money from people at Cadillacs, new, new development, you do it already downtown, and nobody's objected to that, you know, so just want to present that. Thank you.
There are three participants in the meeting.
Who did we get?
You have been added to the waiting room. You cannot talk or listen until the host.
Oh, okay. We're not being, we're not being acted to.
Nope, 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 nope.
Okay.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Kevin Dewey. You guys probably all know me, I'm from Chico's Taco House. And I don't live in the city, but I have a strong interest in Cadillac West because I'm right on the border. And I'm pushing on the, and I'm for the TIF, even though it's not me paying it, but we do have a lot of projects that we're working on in the Cadillac West. We're trying to get banners up, just like the DDA has downtown, so when you come across the causeway, they're up. We talked about the pedestrian walking, there's a big safety issue going across the streets. So all that stuff takes funding and grants, applying for grants and stuff like that. And there's a core group of businesses over there that are pushing really hard to do different things. You know, we're talking, we're having a harvest fest over there this fall. We're doing a tree lighting again, we're moving that to, over to the plaza, that's in the works. We have their big Easter egg hunt over at the Revival Center on that side of town. So we are growing, we are doing things, so this will just help us lay a foundation, recognize the west side, and just, you know, help us get some of the funding and apply for grants and stuff like that that we need, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, seeing no one else, I'm going to close the public hearing.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Can I say something first?
Oh, you may.
Yes, I just.
Of course you can.
I just want to say that benefiting a part of Cadillac benefits all of Cadillac, and that Cadillac West, we have multiple economic engines in this community. And one of our economic engines that I learned from Jerry Adams years ago and the, and the public planner class that I took, it, one of our economic engines is tourism. And that part of town, that's also as people drive by up one-fifteen, you know, when they're heading to other places, the face you put as people go by is, determines whether or not, it determines their impression of us. And so to invest in all parts of Cadillac would, I would like to see, especially when you have, when you have the authority already, already established, this just gives them tools to do things as an authority and improve that area. And I think when we improve Cadillac, wherever we improve Cadillac, we improve Cadillac. So that's just my two cents, or twelve cents, whatever it was.
You got two cents? I have two cents. Just wanted to point out for members of the public, members of the council, anyone watching, that the, the board packet, the public packet, the second to last page does have a chart that shows revenue projections from the tax increment financing zone up to 2040. The numbers are really de minimis. You know, it's under four thousand dollars, as a, for instance, in, in basically the first year, then it goes to five thousand. There are some inflationary numbers that are in there to adjust it over time. You know, in the initial timeframe, you know, these dollars would be used, I think, to help, you know, fund studies and analyses as to how to move things forward, projects forward there, as well as potentially, once there's a little bit of a piggy bank saved up, you know, to be able to be used as matching dollars for, you know, trying to get grants for other projects, whether it's, you know, a fishing pier project. I know that the City Council chose to table our request to apply for a grant at that time, but, you know, it, it may or may not come back at some other time. I, I don't know, you know.
It may come back with options for parking.
Right, right.
Which was our only concern.
So in any event, all of that information is in the documentation, so.
Thank you.
You got two cents?
I'm good.
I don't either. Ready?
I'm ready.
Motion to approve the resolution to adopt the Development and Tax Increment Financing Plan for the Cadillac West Corridor Improvement Area?
Support.
Councilmember Ingalls, French, Allenboss?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries. And now we have some communications.
Yes, it's being recommended to approve the display of a banner from August fourth through the eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, and the closure of Mitchell Street from eight a.m. to five-thirty p.m. on August ninth, two thousand twenty-five for the Mitchell Street Market.
I'd make a motion to approve the display of a banner from August fourth to the eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, excuse me, and the closure of Mitchell Street from eight a.m. to five-thirty p.m. on August ninth, two thousand twenty-five for the Mitchell Street Market.
Support.
Councilmember French, Allenboss?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls, Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
It's being recommended to approve the display of a banner from August eleventh through the eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five for the Northern District Fair.
I'd make a motion to approve the display of a banner from August eleventh to the eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five for the Northern District Fair.
Support.
Councilmember Allenboss?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls, French, Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the display of a banner from July twenty-first through the twenty-ninth, two thousand five, twenty-five for the Northwest Michigan Veterans Expo.
I'll make a motion to approve the display of a banner from July twenty-first through the twenty-ninth of two thousand twenty-five for the Northwest Michigan Veterans Expo.
Second.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls, French, Allenboss?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harrison Cass from eight a.m. to three p.m. on August third, two thousand twenty-five for the Revival Center Church in the Park.
I'd make a motion to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris Street and Cass Street from eight a.m. to three p.m. on August third, two thousand twenty-five for the Revival Center Church in the Park.
Support.
Councilmember Ingalls, French, Allenboss?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
It's being recommended to approve the revised street closure for Festival of the Races as presented. This was approved earlier, and they're just asking for revision.
It's the changes.
I'll make a motion to approve the revised street closure for the Festival of Races as presented.
Second.
Councilmember French, Allenboss?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls, Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
Yes, council needs to designate the primary and the alternate to attend and vote at the Michigan Municipal League Annual Convention.
So you guys, any of you planning on going? I'm going. It's in September.
Is that the one in Grand Rapids?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'm going.
You're going? So how about, I could be the rep and you could be the alternate?
Sounds good to me.
So.
I'd make a motion to designate T.I. Shippers as the primary representative and Brian Allenboss as the alternate to attend and vote at the Michigan Municipal League Annual Convention.
I'll support.
Councilmember Allenboss?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls, French, Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries. City manager's report.
Everybody on City Council, certainly, certainly more than welcome to obviously attend the convention and attend the, the convention's annual board meeting where the votes take place, so just.
We just have one vote.
Yeah, yeah, just one vote. Thank you. The first item under the manager's report is a bid and recommendation regarding the purchase of a backhoe loader. Five bids were received. The recommendation is to go with the lowest bidder, Burnups Equipment out of Big Rapids, Michigan, for a new Holland backhoe in the amount of one-hundred-two-thousand-seven-hundred-ninety-four dollars and twenty-five cents. Funds are available in our stores and garage fund. How many years do we get out of these, Owen?
Well, to be honest, this is a little bit of a disappointing recommendation because there was a program, a governmental lease program, where we were renting these things by the hour, for, by the engine hour for about the last decade, but for a loader, that program just went away. So this is one we have to add. Based on our usage, we're anticipating getting at least fifteen years out of it.
Okay, that helps.
Yep, yep.
I'd make a motion to award the purchase of a new backhoe loader to Burnups Equipment in the amount of one-hundred-two-thousand-seven-hundred-ninety-four dollars and twenty-five cents.
Support.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls, French, Allenboss?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, mayor and members of the City Council. The next item is in regard to the request of a purchase of two zero-turn lawnmowers. The recommended company after bids were solicited is to award it to Outdoor Equipment Company in the amount of twenty-thousand-seven, excuse me, twenty-thousand-nine-hundred-seventy-four dollars and forty-two cents. Funds are available in our water and sewer fund accordingly, and you can see the spec sheet, which is the second, second page of the communication, showing all of the bids and whether they met or did not meet the bidding specs. Who's getting these, Owen?
One in, one in each of Jeff's two departments, so Water Resources?
Okay.
Waste Water Plant and the Distribution and Collection.
These have gone up a lot in the last.
Yeah, it's about twenty thousand is the total for two of them.
Right, ten thousand a piece. Okay.
Nice commercial-grade Toro.
And we usually get about ten years out of them?
Yeah, those, I think the current ones are at least ten, ten years old.
We get ten out of them or more.
Okay, that helps too. I'd make a motion to award the purchase of two zero-turn mowers to Outdoor Equipment, I'm not talking very well, company in the amount of twenty-thousand-nine-hundred-seventy-four dollars and forty-two cents.
Support.
Councilmember Ingalls, French, Allenboss?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, introduction of ordinances.
First ordinance is the request to adopt a resolution to introduce an ordinance amending the General Appropriations Act for the 2026 fiscal year and to set a public hearing for August fourth, 2025. As you'll see in the council communication, information changed subsequent to adoption of the last appropriations ordinance that now dictates that we have to change that ordinance to reflect the new numbers. Owen, would you like to clarify any of that?
Heavily rollback, I think it's like the fifth one in the last eight years or something, so gave you some details, rolled back about point oh-seven mils on the operating, point oh-four on the DDA, so disappointing, but it's statutory and we, we have no choice except by vote of the people, so.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to introduce ordinance amending the General Appropriations Act for the 2026 fiscal year and set a public hearing for August fourth, 2025.
Second.
Councilmember French, Allenboss?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls, Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, mayor, members of the City Council. The next item is a request to adopt a resolution to introduce an ordinance amending a lease agreement with Up North Arts, Inc., and to set a public hearing for August eighteenth, 2025. Just a couple of words, I, I can't state enough how incredible Up North Arts has been in terms of partnership with the city of Cadillac. What they've done with the facility that I think people, you know, commonly would call either the Naval Reserve or the Senior Center, we, we call it officially the Community Center, is really remarkable. The transformation over, over the years, especially with us not having necessarily the resources to put in, what they've been able to put in has been, has been nothing short of marvelous, and they're obviously great partners to be and great tenants to have there. The request to have the hearing set for August eighteenth is because we would like City Council to consider adjustments to the lease to make it a partnership that we can continue for the foreseeable future. The ordinance that's in its draft form, that's all in the public packet, does identify what the funding levels are in terms of revenues that Up North Arts and the city have worked out for your consideration. I don't recall them off the top of my head, but I think, is it, Owen, is it seven fifty a month?
Yes.
So, and procedurally, given where this property is located, it does require a public hearing accordingly to do versus just being an administrative function.
Okay, and we'll have the hearing next time.
August eighteenth, because, again, the type of, type of property and its location requires the skipping of a meeting.
Okay.
So.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to introduce ordinance amending a lease agreement with Up North Arts, Inc., and set a public hearing for August eighteenth, 2025.
Second.
Councilmember Allenboss?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls, French, Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
Owen, would you like to take the last one?
Sure. So really, it's just a, the city has levied a one percent admin fee as approved by the General Property Tax Act for a number of years, and at some professional development, our treasurer wanted to have this, have us be able to trace this back to a resolution where it was explicitly affirmed that the city is doing this, and so that's what we're doing here tonight. It's no change to the current process. It's her bringing that kind of back from a recommendation of her peers and saying we should have this just memorialized as a resolution.
Okay, that's easy.
I'd make a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing collection of property tax administrative fee.
Support.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls, French, Allenboss?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries. And our amended item.
Yes, thank you. Very, very similar to what we've done a couple of times yet tonight, where we've talked about tax increment financing. The item that we amended to include in tonight's agenda is the request to set a public hearing for the Lakeland Apartments Workforce Housing Brownfield Project, just like the Cooley School. School Redevelopment Project, Cadillac Lost, North Lake Street Flats. It's the same, it's the same tool in order to, to help make these projects get across that finish line. We are trying to do what we can to keep the timing moving and its review with the Planning Commission, which it still has to go through, along with everything that they have to do with the State of Michigan to get their programs in place, and this is a necessary checkoff box. The, the Brownfield Authority did meet already and talked about it. Our consultant is still here, should you have any more questions for Mac. It's a sizable project, approximately 200?
253 units.
253 multifamily units. The Planning Commission is certainly going to have, you know, their work cut out for them as they look at site plans and, and traffic and, and how all of that would work. But I can tell you that in the time that we've been talking with this development group out of Grand Rapids, they've been very, very good to work with. I think we're on concept number 12 possibly, you know, so it, it started out with being, what, over 500 units, I think? Yeah, so, you know, looking at, at paring it back and making it fit the space has been something that they're very willing to do and very interested in, in, in working with us on, as well as trying to be very courteous to the adjacent neighborhoods. One of the major issues was working on land owned by a, a State of Michigan utility. At one point, they didn't have control over that property, which was causing the city a lot of heartburn about where's traffic going to go. Now they do have control over that property, which has really made the project a lot more feasible to happen. Again, this has no bearing on what the actual project may look like. This just gets the incentive piece of it in place or in play.
Right.
And then they'll still have to go through the full site plan review process accordingly.
Okay, and this will all be fully explained at the hearing, correct?
Oh, of course, yeah, and you'll see the developers, just like you have this evening, will be here, and they'll have some slides and whatnot.
Great.
Yep. I'd make a motion to adopt a resolution regarding Lakeland Apartments Brownfield Plan and set a public hearing for August 4th, 2025.
Support.
Councilmember Ingalls, French, Allenboss?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, lastly, we have some minutes for, and reports from boards and commissions. I see the Downtown Development Authority has there in the packet. And that takes us to our final public comments. These are back to three minutes. Seeing nobody. Move to good of the order.
Yeah, nothing.
I don't even have two cents.
I do.
I thought you're in a talkative mood tonight. Fire away.
I am, I'm just so, I, I'm just, I, I'm all like...
You seem happy.
This weekend, yeah, this weekend, the art festival, the Festival of the Arts. I just want to say that the organizers, the amount of work that went in to put that together, that was Cadillac at its best. You know, I spent both Friday and Saturday down there, even in the rain, going around seeing all the art and, and the people and the music and the dance and the community. It was just astounding. And one thing that I noticed, because I notice these things, is a lot of blue shirts with City of Cadillac on them, and a lot of city workers on the weekend out there making sure that everything was running smoothly, which it did. There was no trash anywhere, everything was just taken care of. It was just, it was just bellissimo, and it was glorious weekend, even in the rain. It was a glorious weekend for Cadillac, and I just want to say thank you to the city workers and all of the volunteers and everybody that made that possible to make us, just was like, you know, it just looked so good. So that's all I have to say. And with that?
We're done?
Do you have anything?
Nope.
Okay, well, end the meeting. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Where would you go?